I will call the August 28th, 2023 special meeting of the Yakima City Council to order. City Clerk roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Byers?
Present.
Councilmember Cousins?
Present.
Mayor Dicio?
Here.
Councilmember Herrera? Councilmember Masias?
Here.
And Assistant Mayor Land is absent.
Thank you. Board President Norm Walker, do you have, do you wish to convene your board?
I have a few items to do before we do our roll call. First of all, we have translation services from Language Connection. If you are in person tonight and need translation services, we have devices you can use. Please check in with Barb right here for a device. And Jorge, please translate that information. Second of all, we do offer live streaming options for this meeting. You can find the link on our webpage under Find It Fast and Select Board of Directors. Under Public Comment, there will be options for public comment before the meeting adjourns. Please sign in at the entrance if you wish to make a public comment tonight. If you're interested in past meetings, you can find a link on our webpage to the YSD YouTube channel to view past Yakima School District meetings that were recorded and posted there. Just a reminder to all our guests tonight, please remember to turn on your microphone for the live streaming and you'll know it's on when the red light is on. There are a few that have a green light. Please turn it off when you're not speaking so we don't have excess feedback on the live stream. Okay. Barb, would you call the roll for the school board, please?
Yes. Director Beckett?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Vice President Villanueva?
Here.
President Walker?
Here.
And Director Navarro Jr. is absent.
And would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the fourteen confided tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation.
The people of the Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres.
The Cross Adams, Benton, Chelan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Keditas, Kudikat, and Yakima Counties.
Today, we honor the native people who are tied to the land through history, legends, and cultures.
We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today.
We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial.
An acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect.
And he stepped toward correcting the stories and practices that erase Indigenous peoples' history and culture.
It also honors the truth.
As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Thank you to our students, and we'll now turn the meeting back over to Mayor Dicio and our city council.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. If anyone in the room would like to speak during public comment, please fill out a slip on the table in the back of the room and hand it to our city clerk. Public comments will be limited to two and a half minutes per person and 15 minutes in total. Please identify yourself in the city you live in when you begin providing public comment. Do we have anyone? Okay. That concludes public comment for this meeting. Next on the agenda is item four, an update about the proposed Aquatic Center and MLK Junior Park. Parks and Recreation Manager Ken Wilkinson will provide the update.
How about now? Thank you, Mayor Dicio, and good evening, school board members and city council. As Mayor said, I'm Ken Wilkinson, Parks and Recreation Manager for this city, and I'm excited to share with you the progress that we've been making on the Aquatic Center at Martin Luther King Junior Park. I have a slide presentation, but I want to give a little bit of background first. In early this year, the city of Yakima hired NAC Architecture and WTI Water Technology to create plans, specifications, and bid documents for a swimming pool or aquatic center at Martin Luther King Junior Park. We are on track with that process. The funding for that came through the Department of Commerce. Thanks to Senator King and our other elected officials in Olympia, we were able to receive the funding to be able to pay for all of that work. But we are on track with that, 50% complete with the developmental design, and it has been a great process. We've had city council members involved. Councilmember Byers, Cousins, and Herrera have been involved. We've had park commissioners, we've had community members as well. And I've said this to city council, but I'll say it to the board. We've had many conversations, and they didn't all go very well as we were getting to the point where we're at today with the design. But the discussions were, and we did have a couple of arguments, but there was the good discussion about what the community needs and what they want. And I think we've come up with a really, really great design, and I'll share that with you in a little bit. There was an ad hoc committee that was created back in 2018, and we again had city council members on that. Park commissioners and community leaders did a lot of legwork before this process, recent process, has started. And we also did a feasibility study, which was very instrumental in taking us to the next step. Earlier this year, we convened another ad hoc committee, like I said, and that's where a lot of the work that you'll see has been done. I have to give credit to NAC Architecture and WTI. They did a tremendous job of listening to us, listening to the community, taking all the information that was created years ago and putting that together to, again, design a great aquatic facility at Martin Luther King Junior Park. The challenge that we gave them was something for everyone, and that's a tall, tall, tall order for us to be able to accomplish. But I'll go through the slides quickly and let you see some of the stuff that we were able to put together. So this slide you see is the aerial view overhead, and you'll notice that Washington Middle School's track is just to the north of the pool. And then, of course, Washington Middle School is there even further north. And then to the south is Adams Elementary. To the east is Ninth Street, and to the west is Eighth Street. We'll zoom in a little bit closer so you can see some of the elements that we've incorporated into the design. Many of them are just really a lot of fun. The giant slide that you see to the left is a two tower, which will certainly give some of our teens and older adults a lot of challenge and a lot of fun. We've also did the zero depth entry. I don't know if this will do a pointer or not. I guess I won't even try that. But the zero depth entry for the younger kids, we've got an area for lap swimming. We have an area for water walking for our adults and our seniors. Very important that we had an area for swim lessons. As many of you know, every year or so, we have a drowning in our community, which is unacceptable. And having an area for us to continue to do swim lessons like we do at Franklin Pool and like we do at Lyons Pool is critical for this facility. We've got some other things that are really exciting in this design. We have a ninja cross, which is kind of climbing across water. There's some volleyball area, a basketball area as well, and just lots of fun, fun things for a lot of people to do. But we also have grassy areas, we have areas of shade, we also have areas for food, and I'll show you a little bit better drawings here in just a moment, but I wanted to give you the overview of the actual design. The one other thing that was critical to the ad hoc group was a restroom for the park users, not just for those that utilize the pool. And I'll show you that a little bit closer in just a moment. Again, here's the front elevation. I do have a little bit of a problem with the slide colors. Someone let me know that those are Green Bay Packer colors? And I know we have at least one in the room that's a Packer fan. We won't mention that, Bob. So I may have a little issue with that. That color may not remain, but very, very welcoming. Walking up to the facility, you're going to see the swimming, the slide there. I'm sure that's going to create tremendous amount of excitement. And to the left is the bathroom for the park users, and to the right is where the restrooms and shower rooms will be, and then also the mechanical. Just zoom in a little bit closer, the ticketing window and queuing area for people as they're waiting to get into the pool. Just another view here from a different direction, and I think the next slide shows, yes, the community room. And this is something that we wanted to include also, is this is a space for the community to use for parties or meetings or even for trainings for our lifeguards, but also be able to use it during the swim, when the swimming pool is open, but also to be able to use it in the extended season, maybe in the late spring and early fall. And again, just backing out a little bit further. And then the community room, a little bit closer there. Good covered space for all kinds of things. The area I mentioned here, just to the left, that's the picnic area where we will bring in food trucks. We're also planning to have vending machines as well available. And then to the right, you can see the spray area, and that's just another thing, fun things for people to enjoy. And there's, this is the drawing from the pool side, again, just a welcoming environment for people to use. Deck area with chairs, all the things that lots of people really enjoy. And another aerial view, this is from the north looking south. You can see the grassy areas a little bit better. Talking just a little bit about budget, $1 million for the design specifications and bid documents, that's the process we're in now, and for construction, we've set a budget of $10 million. Quickly going through the funding sources, the city of Yakima has pledged $3 million, and of that, we're using 1.5 million of ARPA, CBDG funds of $1 million, and then we received an RCO grant, Recreation and Conservation Office for the state of Washington, for a half a million dollars. Our Yakima County Commissioners have also earmarked $3 million for this aquatic center. I mentioned earlier the funding from the state legislature, design specifications and bid documents, again, $1 million, and then construction, we just recently got that approval for that grant for 1.125200, and that will be going towards construction. And again, thanks to Senator King, we cannot thank him enough for his efforts on our behalf in Olympia. And then donations and grants, we're looking at additional grants, donations, we're working with Addie Logston to start a capital campaign, which will be starting here soon. We're working on a brochure, a flyer, that we'll be able to give to people. This is in draft form, but we're hoping to have that here in another couple of weeks that can go out for that capital campaign. We have heard word that there are individuals, there's families, there's some businesses that are interested in donating, and that capital campaign will be for $3 million. I know that was quick, but I wanted to bring you that information and then, of course, answer any questions that you might have. I know city council have seen the similar slides, but always good to see them again. No other questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. It looks lovely. It's going to be a welcome addition to that neighborhood. And I'm assuming that all of this construction is ADA, provides for ADA compliance, both in the swim area and the splash pad and all of it, right?
Absolutely, yes. And that's one of the great things about that zero depth entry or that beach entry. Individuals who may have mobility issues can get right into the water. And it's great for the younger ones that are just not so sure about water. They can really acclimate, similar to a beach, but there's no waves, so that's a great, great comfortable place. Restrooms, of course, will be ADA, entrance, all those areas, probably except the big slide. I don't know that people with mobility challenges will be able to get up there, but certainly. Great question.
I don't really have a question. I just want to say it's been so, it's been such an honor to work on this project for as long as I've worked on it and to see it come to where it is. And the ADA was so important when we talked about it, you know, when we talked about what this was going to look like, and sustainability was another big thing. Is this still going to be relevant in a few years? Will kids still enjoy this and families coming together to enjoy this? And I think what Ken said, when we see a drowning every year, it's preventable if we have resources for kids, you know, to cool off in these triple digits that we have been experiencing. And I think that's just really important, and I'm really excited to see this come together. And hopefully, we can get some partnerships on maybe like swim lessons and other things that we can partner on to help our children really, or families really enjoy this pool to the best extent that they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Next on the agenda is item five, a report about the potential street closure connecting MLK Junior Park with Adams Elementary. Public Works Director Scott Schaefer will make the report.
Good evening, Scott Schaefer, Public Works Director. Excuse me. One idea that came out of this project that we're doing with the Aquatic Center is potentially closing a section of Race Street between Eighth and Ninth Street and then develop that as additional open green space. And doing so, that would connect Adams Elementary to the park itself. Now, right now, it's only at a discussion level, but if we were to pursue it further, we'd want to do a traffic analysis to see the impacts of the traffic in that neighborhood. You know, obviously, the traffic volume's going to increase because of the Aquatic Center, but luckily, it's going to be in operation when school's out, so that helps the situation. But we want to make sure that we can accommodate the volume of traffic in that area, also look at the traffic patterns. But then also, we want to do a parking survey too, because once we take out that section of roadway, we're going to be losing some on-street parking, so we'll want to see if we can accommodate that elsewhere. But with that, like I said, this is all at the discussion level, so any questions?
Are there any questions? Punch your button.
I'm on. So, Mr. Schaefer, the parking that we're losing, is it diagonal parking and parallel parking? Do we know about how much?
It's parallel.
It's parallel? Okay. So about how many spots do we know?
That I don't know. Often, I don't know.
So, and I guess, Mr. Green, I should ask you that if we lose that, potentially, people in the neighborhood will be looking for parking? Can they park in the school parking lot during the evening?
I think that since this is in the discussion stage, there are all kinds of possibilities. What's exciting about this potential street closure and creation of green space is that it would provide potentially access for elementary students at Adams to extend beyond our current school grounds. And as you know, there's a lovely playground there that was donated and the work that Rotary put into creating that and making that accessible. So I think that if there's that kind of opportunity for our students, there should be an opportunity for our green space to then be accessible at certain hours to the public. So I think that there's kind of a symbiotic relationship or mutually beneficial opportunity for us to then provide access at certain hours, typically later in the day, obviously, because parking certainly is in short supply even for our own staff members and families. But I don't think it's anything that is insurmountable, and given that it is parallel parking space, I would anticipate that we're not losing, you know, too much on that roadway as is. So I'm excited about this potential opportunity and what it could mean for the community, and then knowing that we have this wonderful aquatic center going in between, nestled between our, one of our elementaries, or one of our largest elementaries, and then one of our four middle schools, just a tremendous opportunity. So I look forward to working with Bob and you as the city to make that a reality.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So I'm actually interested in that traffic study when we do have it, because I want to look at the impact it may have on emergency services in case there is an issue at one of the schools. And so as long as it doesn't have huge impact to that and that we're not taking away any of that access, then I'm all for it.
Sure. One item that I did fail to mention is the fact that we obviously want to make sure that we address the pickups and drop-offs that are being conducted at Adams Elementary as well, so.
Are there any other questions? Oh, yes.
Again, it's in the discussion, but has anything like this ever happened, Scott, in your history or anybody can answer that on city staff? Because I want to mention about the budget on versus adding the green space and maybe speed bumps, because I live like two blocks away from that street, and I know every day there's some type of speeding, even if within school hours, outside of school hours. So do you have an idea, like maybe how much would it cost versus adding speed bumps? Because I know that road.
No, I don't have that figure. I'll find out for you.
I think it...
Anyone else?
Yes, Councilmember Herrera, are you talking about on that green space closure potentially, that street?
Yeah. So versus adding the green space versus adding speed bumps? Because I know, obviously, in the city, the speed bumps, adding speed bump is a long process too, and there's other areas as well too, so I wasn't too familiar with.
And thank you for that clarification. Of course, the obvious hope is that that becomes a green space and then that's not an issue. There was a question about the traffic study, and perhaps this will expedite the meeting a little bit, because this was one of our topics, but since we're talking about that potential traffic flow, we, certainly the district would like to thank the work that the city has done throughout the district that makes it more accessible to parents and including emergency vehicles. So we've seen that be the case at Hoover Elementary with the one-way roads now, which if you had been there previously with the pickup and drop-off, the congestion was terrible and would extend well beyond a half an hour. You had parents showing up hour or more early to claim their spot, to pick up their child, and now the traffic flow is such that that's a lesser issue. And we've had the same thing that's happened at Garfield Elementary, so that I hope that this is an opportunity to assess the traffic flow around Adams, and I believe that if we get potentially a one-way street coming by the school and exiting out another area, then it could certainly make things more accessible for parents and community and emergency vehicles.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item six, a presentation about the Handle With Care Program. Yakima Police Lieutenant Chad Janice and School District Director of Safety and Security, Sarah Cordova, will make the presentation.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Lieutenant Chad Janice of the Yakima Police Department, and...
I'm Sarah Cordova, District Safety and Security Director.
And between the two of us, we manage our Handle With Care program here in the community of Yakima. What Handle With Care is, is a notification every time one of our police officers goes to an incident where a child may have experienced, is present and may have experienced an adverse event, whether it's a domestic violence incident, a DUI arrest, where they're in the vehicle, a car crash, a fire, so on and so forth. They put a code in our system and it sends a report to Sarah in the school district every morning. And so we are starting year three. We've had two incredible years to this program. We continue to learn so much from this program, and I will go over just kind of a highlight of the numbers over the last couple of years, and then Sarah's going to talk about some successes on the school level, because really, the heavy work is done at the school level, and they're incredible partners for the city and the police department. So we started this program at the beginning of the school year, two years ago now, in 2021. And coming out the gate, this is very different, unlike anything we'd ever done at the police department, creating a notification system every time we were at a call for service where a child was present. And we started with just domestic violence incidents as part of our domestic violence coalition efforts that many of you have heard about. And so that first year, we did, oh, let's see here, about, there was about 428 incidents, and it amounted to about 750 students, or 750 children, not all students, because they may be too young or not in the district or so on and so forth. Following year, we did 1,500 incidents, so last year, 2022 school year, and 2,400 children affected. And then throughout this year, so from January on, at least in our calendar, 858 incidents and 1,400 students. So over the last two years, we have created notifications on 4,500 children. Many of those are the result of domestic violence incidents, and the chart to the right of the screen there is the difference between domestic violence, domestic violence, IPV. So IPV is intimate partner violence, where it's a dating relationship, a spouse, a person with a child in common, a marriage, so on and so forth. And so those largely outnumber the times that our officers are finding children at the scene. And the one main benefit that this program has taught police officers to do is look at each one of the incidents they're responding to from a trauma-informed lens, so they're opening their eyes to more than just what brought them to the scene, whether it's a domestic or anything else, and looking for those children that are impacted by these incidents each and every day. And then we're creating the report to the school district. And so largely, the Handle With Care notifications are done at domestic IPV incidents, which is well over 1,000 incidents since we started this. And over to the, further to the right are the difference between criminal and noncriminal. When I say criminal, it's an incident where somebody has been arrested. And so the criminal incidents in the first year, we had about 45 criminal incidents the first year of use that were just domestic IPV, and then we continued to climb, and then we've somewhat leveled off, but we have a few months yet to go. And so on the police department end, like I said, the majority of the work is done by our great partners at the Yakima School District, but this program continues to live very well within the police department. Our officers look for opportunities to utilize this and certainly have expanded well beyond the original intent, which was domestic violence on into all of these other incidents, as you can see up on the screen there, in using the Handle With Care notification. Moreover, it's spread throughout our valley, and Sarah and I have both worked with many districts throughout the Yakima Valley to help them get the program up and running, and we continue to have those meetings and look for ways to expand the program from the police side of things. And I'll turn it over to our partner at the school district, Sarah Cordova.
So as Chad explained, we've been working on this program for the past, well, this is our third year. And when you look at the data comparing last year's information compared to, excuse me, our first year compared to last year's data, you can see, I know this is a really small graph, it's hard to read, but the red line is our most recent year, last school year, and the blue lines are our first year. So you can see that the red lines are definitely a lot larger than the blue lines, so we had a lot more students impacted by domestic violence or other traumatic events in their home prior to them going to school the very next day. So when you think about, you know, what we go through in our homes before we go to work, we probably have a nice routine every morning that we go through, and we go to work and we're feeling pretty good, but a lot of our students don't have that same experience either the night before or the morning before school. They may have something that's happening before they have to go to school and concentrate and learn and be successful in their day. We compared it also last year's numbers by elementary, middle school, and high school levels and compared our first year to last year's numbers. So the bar graphs look about the same height, but if you look at the numbers, in our first year, we had 405 elementary students as compared to 586 students impacted by Handle With Care notifications. So that's a pretty significant jump. And then again, for middle school, 219 in our first year, up to 486. And for our high school students, 297 students our first year compared with 500. So the numbers pretty much jumped by double for the year-to-year data, which is, you know, it's, it really puts it into perspective how many kids are being impacted on a regular basis before they have to go to school. We also did a quick comparison month to month and to see which months, if we could see a pattern, is, you know, one month more traumatic for kids on a regular basis or another? We didn't really see too much of a comparison month to month, but there are quite a lot of alerts that are coming through on a monthly basis for our kids. I think the most challenging information that we came across is what the top four reasons for a child to... I think the most challenging information that we came across is what the top four reasons for a child to have a Handle With Care notification that would be on the notification. So at the elementary, middle and high school level, our highest number of Handle With Care notifications are for IPV or intimate partner violence. So typically, that would be parents fighting with one another, having some kind of domestic violence incident between the two of them. The next highest, most common, I guess, would be the runaways. So that's down a couple of levels. But we did have quite a few kids running away from home and and that started to be tracked. So I don't know that the numbers necessarily changed from year to year. It's just the fact that our our police officers are putting that in the Handle With Care, which is actually quite nice because then our schools can be looking to see if those students are showing up at school so that we can keep tabs and see if we can reunite those kids back with their families. So there are a lot of kids that are impacted by runaways. Now, when you see the number 94 kids running away or 122 kids running away or 67, that's not what it means. It just means that's how many incidents. So if a student lives in a house with three siblings, it will be three notifications. If a student runs away from home more than one time, we're counting each of those notifications. So it's not 94 kids that ran away, but 94 times a student was impacted by a runaway in their home, if that makes a little bit more sense. So it looks really dire when you first look at it, but when you understand that there are a lot of repeat kids on these notifications, that also helps put it into perspective. There's also quite a few kids experiencing domestic violence. So that could be uncles or aunts, somebody in the home, excuse me, having some kind of incident in the home. And then the juvenile problems. So that would be kids doing perhaps malicious mischief in the community. So maybe it's throwing rocks at cars in the intersection or having an incident somewhere in the community. So those would be triggering a Handle With Care notification as well. Some of the other concerning trends that our kids are experiencing before they go to school, we sat, we saw that we had 29 elementary kids with assault as the the reason for the notification. Thirty eight times, there were elementary kids with sex crime as the reason for the notification and then 22 elementary kids with welfare checks. If you look at the middle school, there's some similarities. We had 24 children with assault, 16 with abuse or neglect, and 15 children with welfare checks. And then at the high school, again, some similarities to the other grade levels. We had 42 children with assault as the reason for the notification, 26 for sex crime, and 15 children with threats. So these are, you know, pretty alarming things that kids are having to deal with before they go to school. We did a study of three families. I'm just going to share one family with you. So I went through the Handle With Care notifications and I was looking for families that had high numbers of Handle With Care notifications and compared their attendance, their discipline, and to see if they were on target for graduation. So this particular family had a second grade student, an eighth grade student and a 10th grade student in their home. And they had four Handle With Care notifications throughout the the last school year. And you can see that at second grade, the second grade student had 22 absences and one referral. But despite that, they were still low risk for not graduating. So it it looks opposite to what it is, but they're at high risk for graduate or they're highly likely to graduate. If you look at the eighth grade student, they had four Handle With Care notifications as well, 15 absences. And then it's, I think that number is 16. My eyes are not as good as they once were, 16 referrals. And the eighth grade student is actually more than likely going to graduate from high school as well. But then you go to the 10th grade student and they had four Handle With Care notifications, 62 absences, three referrals, and dropped out of school in February. So you can see it, you know, at the elementary level, our kids have a lot of supports built in. They have maybe just one classroom teacher, maybe two classroom teachers. They've got a relationship with the administrators, the counselors. They have a lot of safety nets in place. At the middle school, you still have a lot of connections that kids are able to build. At the high school, things are bigger. They have more classes that they go to. They may or may not have the same connections at that level. And so when you are a high school student and you're dealing with a lot of traumatic things in your home, it's going to be harder and harder to be successful in school. So these are the kinds of things that we really want to keep an eye on and make sure that we are providing lots of support for our students while they're in school so that we keep them engaged. So some of the the system issues that we are seeing is that this, these are pretty big numbers. We had 19 students who are responsible for frequent upheavals in their homes and in the lives of their siblings in the community. So that would be students who are running away from home or causing some problems with juvenile issues in the community. We had two students who were frequent runaways and they were responsible for 84 Handle With Care notifications. So we need to find ways to support our kids when they're struggling as well as their homes, their families. And oftentimes, these are foster kids. So these aren't necessarily kids in their their first family. It might be kids that are in secondary families, but this impacts three schools. So if one student is a runaway, it's going to impact more than one school. We had one student who ran away 12 times and that impacted himself and his siblings quite regularly, and that impacts three schools. We had one student who was responsible for 28 runaway notifications and that impacted three schools. And then we had three students on the notification multiple times a month for juvenile problems in our community. And that is something that we kept seeing over and over again. And so Lieutenant Janice and I took special interest in this family and tried to work with other community resources to try to help support these kids. So these are kids that come up on our radar frequently, which causes us to think about ways that we can work together and also provide more supports within our schools. And in Yakima School District, we do have a lot of supports for our kids. We have administrators, counselors, nurses, social emotional specialists, behavior and MTSS, which is multi tiered systems of support interventionists who are providing supports to kids in the school day. We have student advocates and social workers. So we do have a lot of people within our buildings who love and care for our kids and who are trying to help them be successful. We also have really strong connections with our elementaries, our middle schools and high schools just in the support and the appreciation for the Handle With Care notifications. And one particular school, Barge Lincoln, has been a a strong advocate for the program and have seen the impact for their their students on a pretty regular basis. The Handle With Care notification did alert them of a student who was having some issues in the home because they were on the notification two times, which prompted them to have a home visitor go check on the student and find some ways to provide support in an immediate act, an immediate method. So we were very happy with the impact that it's had for our kids. So we are seeing that there are a large number of Yakima School District students who are impacted by domestic violence and other types of violence in their home. We know that we need to provide appropriate trauma informed care for our children early on. And we we were able to have a training for our our teachers and our parent educators at the beginning of the school year on trauma based approaches, and we want to continue working on that. We also know that just knowing our students and noticing changes can make a positive impact on their futures. If we don't know the things that are happening in their homes, if we don't know the things that are happening in their lives, it's harder to help them. So the more we know about them, the more supports we can provide. We're also learning through our data that if we wait until middle school or high school, then that can mean the difference between our students succeeding or struggling. And so we want to provide as many supports at all the levels that we can. And we know that not only do we need to support our children, but we also need to continue supporting our families with as many resources as we can. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. I think it's mostly for Lieutenant. Do we know the percentage of how many are repeats? And what is being done to stop the repeated incidents from the, at the family level?
So we do have a significant issue with some of our families repeating on the notification list. And it probably wouldn't come as a shock to know that they're also repeating on some other lists, both within the school district and then, of course, at the police department. And so recidivism is a problem that we continue to address. It has been very difficult to do so. There were some legislative changes with DCYF, which is runs this Child Protective Service part, which made it a little more difficult and will continue to make it a little more difficult with intervening on some of those levels. So we have to find creative ways to intervene within the community using our community partners, using maybe our faith based community, using our domestic violence coalition. One of the more significant pieces of research that we've most recently uncovered is what is driving gang behaviors in our community. And so we studied some of our more prolific gang members and it's probably not going to shock anybody to find out that each and every one of them had domestic violence, both in their past, the individual gang member, and then in their family's past, so their parents. And so it's generational. It's something that has been created over many, many years and generations. It's going to take us probably generations to figure out some of these solutions. But we continue to work together, continue to communicate every day. Each one of the recidivistic families that we were talking about, that you had asked about, we talk about all the time. We just had one that had moved, that just recently moved out of state. We had seen them on our list a number of times. We had met with every community social service provider that would meet with us on this particular family. And everybody just really struggled to come up with a a solution within a systemic response, which tells us that then we might need to rely upon the community to really help some of these changes.
Could I add one more thing as well? One of the things that we found through the data is that we have a lot of students who, for various reasons, but I think one of the big reasons is the fact that we had schools shut down for COVID. So we've lost a lot of kids as far as attending school regularly. So as I looked through the data, I found about 250 of our students, grades K through 12, who are living in our community but not going to Yakima School District schools. Now, some of those kids could be attending private schools. Some of those kids could be doing some kind of online or homeschool. But the majority of those kids are our kids. And so we've been working with our Student Services Department and we will be working to start doing some home visits to these these homes and see if we can get these kids and these families reengaged with school.
So actually, that was part of my question. So thank you. I was just going to say, looking at the numbers, I know that COVID put huge burdens on families trying to figure out, am I still working, how to work from home and how to do education with children? And so I think, and it shows in your data too, from 22 to 23, that numbers are dropping, which is good. And then I was going to ask how many kids just didn't show back up on the radar. So thank you for answering that and that we're going to try to reach out to those children. This is really important.
So I have two questions. And and the first had to do with the figures from 21, 22, 23. And I think as Councilwoman Cousin said, I think COVID, part of what we're seeing is is COVID. Kids simply weren't at school. They were at home. Hard to really track things that way. So you're into 22 and it's much more realistic. I think there is probably plenty of domestic violence going on and incidents going on that simply wasn't reported and wasn't being tracked, which is why the number appears low. But I'm very encouraged that to date this year, with all the work that you're doing, the numbers appear to be going down, which means that interventions are being very helpful. And so my second question had to do with the school, that when you had one for domestic, one line for domestic violence, the other line for similar things, not domestic violence, but similar concerns. And I noticed that it's consistently higher in domestic violence, although the others came up over time. Do you think that part of it is because because you weren't as aware or not watching for that as much to begin with? And now you are and it's really starting to show?
Well, when we started this program, it supplemented our domestic violence coalition efforts. And so we instructed officers to definitely use this program with domestic violence and that quickly changed. I mean, we immediately talked and said, no, we need to expand. There was a pilot period during the first month that we implemented with the school district. And so there was only a certain amount of schools that were using it. And then as we continued to grow through that first year, it it just grew into everything that the officers used at their own discretion. And really, it was the officers that drove the use in like runaways and traffic offenses and collisions and things that you just probably early on, we weren't thinking about. And so it continues to grow like that. And and as you can tell, the numbers are are more reflective of probably a more accurate picture.
Thank you. And one last question, if I may, sorry. I also noticed that it is at the high school level that we seem to see the highest level of most serious things, which indicates to me, A, it's an age group to be very concerned about, but B, that you are correct in your assessment that if you have earlier intervention, we, I think we can expect to see those numbers coming down. And that's the hope for the future.
Absolutely. I think we we both agree that the intervention needs to start as as soon as possible, the first time they're on the list. Really, at that elementary age, I think there there's just more of an opportunity to make an impact.
I'm gratitude to you and I'm gratitude to the Yakima School District for being such an incredible partner in this program. So thank you.
Oh, you have another question?
Yeah, just one question. Is this currently implemented at all out in West Valley School District?
So we were on track to implement West Valley School District and then it kind of fell off there for a bit. And so we're hoping to get back on track. We have a meeting later this week with the ESD 105 and we're hoping that they become the repository for all of the Valley schools. That'll take a it's a system to build, of course. And so we're we're hopeful that that will be the case and then all schools in Yakima Valley will all kind of centralize within the ESD.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one more.
Just have a quick question for Sarah. In sharing the information, we heard about the police department notifying the district. We also have a system within our district gaggle, for example, where we're notified when there are issues that happen with our students. Are those students then, do we notify the police department at times that there are issues? And so is that relationship happening from our end also?
So there are times that we notify YPD. So gaggle is the is the service that monitors our student computer use. So certain trigger words would alert us if there's something going on. So it could be violence, it could be drugs, alcohol, it could be abuse. So certain things would trigger a police report or a CPS report as well. We also have what is called a possible student situation. And those are the the alerts that come through where there's, it looks like there's imminent risk to somebody's life. And so those can come at any hour of the day. They may come at three in the morning. And when those come through, we call, sometimes we are able to get ahold of families, but sometimes it's not appropriate to call family if the child is at risk of having an incident with their parent. And so at times, we have called 911 and we have been able to get police or fire or a DCR, a Designated Crisis Responder, to the home to help the child. Then we always follow up with that child the very next school day to make sure they've got the resources that they need.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that our city council knew that that relationship is also generated at the at the building level, not just at the police department level. So it just falls into that mantra of together, everyone achieves more. So working together, I think we're able to to find more of the issues that are out there than we would be working separately. Thank you.
I have a question as well, maybe mostly for Sarah. Do you have a sense of the overall percentage of Yakima kids who are impacted based on this this program? Not necessarily the repeat offenders, but just a single count of student, what what percentage that is of risk.
I actually don't have that percentage, but I am more than happy to look into that and see what it is and and report back to you guys.
Okay. And some of the slides that you shared had, particularly where you were sharing the numbers with repeat offenders or where multiple students in a family were impacted. Can you talk about how, I guess this is a two part question, how is the information disseminated within the school system when there's an incident? And and how do staff use that to support the kid?
So as Lieutenant Janice said, every morning, I get the information from the police department. And so then I go through and see where those particular students attend school. Plus, I also look to see if they have siblings at any of our schools. And so that's why the number seems so large, because it's not just the kids that are seen by the officer at the moment, but I also find all of the other siblings that would be in schools as well. And I send that information at the elementary level. I send that to the building principals. At the middle schools, I send it to the building principals and the counseling staff and the school safety officers, and the same for the high schools. I also send a notice to certain people within the district so that people, like as far as all of our nurses, I want to make sure our head nurse knows so she can make sure that nurses are also following up. So it's a little bit different at each level, but that we do want to make sure that the classroom teachers notify so if they see a student that's on the list that's in their classroom, they know how to, you know, be taking a little bit more care with that child, to be more trauma informed in their approach with the student, to give them a little bit more grace for the day. And if they continue to see a student over and over on the list, then to be sure to really put some safeguards in place. I do indicate if a student is a runaway or if their sibling is a runaway. So that's one of the few things that I actually do share the information with the schools. For the most part, I don't share what the incident involved, but if it's a runaway, then I do. Because we want to make sure that if that student does show up to school, that family can be communicated with or police can be communicated with and we can get the student back to their home. Otherwise, I don't let schools know what the incident is.
I appreciate you sharing that. I was going to, my next question was going to be about how you balance the. I was going to, my next question was going to be about how you balance the important need of providing support to kid, but then also maintaining their confidentiality as individual people. And my last question is if the school board had a magic wand to give you, and I guess this is a question for both of you, what would it take to solve the problem? I know that's a big question, but what, you know, off the top of your head, what are the supports that would need to be in place to help, continue to help support this problem and maybe eventually resolve it?
You know, I think the biggest thing is, is a lot of these solutions, especially when we're talking about the recidivism issue within some of these families, they may not even be a criminal event. They just need some sort of service. And so figuring out who in the community is closest to the problem and can create the best engagement for some of these families would be the most helpful tool. And that is just coming together as a community. I think our Domestic Violence Coalition has seen great results doing so. But we have a long way to go. And some of these are really hard solutions to come up with. And certainly, oftentimes, they're not police department solutions or they're not school district solutions. But we see the issue because we're seeing it and watching it every day. And so really just coming together and finding those groups or those people in our community who can really dissect that issue when it's something that just, you know, that we can't figure out or the school can't figure out, but we know it's driving this outcome that we don't like.
And have you generally found that groups in Yakima have been open to coming to the table and discussing? Or do you find, you know, I've been, call out any groups, but is there generally a willingness to be collaborative with different groups, different impacted stakeholders that may be able to have a part of the solution?
Yeah, absolutely. We have had what we would call multidisciplinary team meetings on some of these families, where we bring together social services, schools, police, whoever should be at the table based on whatever the particular issue is involving juvenile courts. And, you know, we all have rules and policies. And so sometimes it's really from the lens of outside of the system response that we need to do a better job building up and figuring out. Because at times, we're just handcuffed sometimes with our, with what we can and what we can't do, whether it's legally or something else. And so community-based solutions, I think, for many of these families is going to be what will help the most. And that's going to take just figuring out who in the community is best to be seated at the table and absolutely coming together and somebody taking that, taking that particular issue on. I think the WAY program is a fantastic example of that, where they figure out what is driving the problem, and they bring that stakeholder into the room to help address that one particular issue. And it's one issue at a time, it's one day at a time. And I think for a lot of these families, that's what we're seeing.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to say to Graciela, thank you for bringing that up, because I know years back, when we first started looking at a domestic violence advocate in the city, we kind of looked at the same thing. It's not all, not every situation fit in one box. And we have so many great community programs out there, nonprofits, that help on these individual things, but they tend to be siloed in a way. And so when we looked at the domestic violence advocate, it was supposed, with our magic wand, it was our, it was our one stop. That person could then direct the services that were needed to the incidents that were happening, you know? So I think that's a really important thing, because we do have some really good community partners that really want to help, but we don't always think of them or tie them in. So finding a better solution and working together is, I think, is really important and really key in this.
So I just wanted to thank you for bringing up Walk About Yakima, because it's a phenomenal program. And, you know, when you have generational issues and families that are stuck in patterns, the way that they serve and help and problem solve, I think, is highly impactful. But I also agree with Councilwoman Cousins that the more people we have, the better. I know that almost every school, and maybe Mr. Green, you know, I mean, almost every school in the Yakima School District has a faith community, a group of people in the faith community who are there as advocates, supporting students, helping teachers, doing all kinds of things. And so those kinds of connections, you know, are highly valuable. And I think they're probably siloed in a way, because they think, oh, this is our school, this is this. But if we can find ways to have those people a part of the conversation and join the whole community aspect of it, could be helpful for some crossover if one particular faith body has more people than others who are willing to step in. The other agencies, like Safe Yakima and other places that offer mentoring programs, you know, just a great way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a fantastic program, and I'm just glad that we have it right now.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have a question?
I'm sorry. I know that there are a lot of support resources within our community. And they all have their own budget that they work under. The funding for this program comes out of general fund, correct?
Yeah, it's just part of, it's actually just part of my daily routine. Every morning, I get my email at 6:15 and start looking for kids.
Would you, would you think that there would be great value, or any value at all, in sharing with legislators the impact of this program? And the number of children that we're able to, the number of children and families that we're able to support using existing funds? And maybe seeking from the legislature additional funds to help kind of bolster the services that are provided?
Can I, can I just jump in just really quick while you guys are thinking of your answer over there? I know that Councilwoman Byers and I did testify a couple of times this past year on the Hill, and the WAY program and a few of the other programs were very hot topics, and people wanted to come over and tour and learn more about what we're doing. So I really think there's a great, I think, I think it's a great path to moving this program forward, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I will absolutely agree that funding is great, and we love funded mandates. And so as far as legislating some of this stuff, we have been a part of certain work groups that have talked about legislating Handle With Care statewide. Every school district and every community looks different. So, you know, to standardize a program like this, I think ours is the best, and we would stand behind that. And mostly because we've been asked to talk in some of these other places that have had it a little longer than us. But absolutely, I think, certain strategic funding that would help implement, and we're certainly looking at grants that are open now through Commerce for the DB Coalition, where we have been awarded a couple of grants that we think will help move the ball forward even better. But anything that's collective, and certainly I wouldn't speak for the school district, but anytime there is an opportunity to strategically place funding to move programs like this forward is a good thing, because I agree, I mean, people have budgets in every department.
I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we legislate the program. Lord knows, we have enough rules coming down from up above us. I'm just, I just don't know, I didn't know how much this is publicized outside of the valley? And how much policymakers and those in control of the purse strings in Olympia are aware of the impact of this program? Thank you.
I'm going to agree with Martha, that I think that we as electeds can certainly promote with our legislature, not specifically the program, but the need for funding of services, to fund the nonprofits, you know, funding for families involved, whatever, funding sources. If, you know, we can certainly press the legislature for that.
Do we have any more questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is item seven, an update regarding free bus passes for students 18 and under. Public Works Director Scott Schaefer will provide this update.
Well, you're probably wondering why we're up here talking about free bus passes from Yakima Transit for 18 and under. And it's because the Yakima School District for years has purchased bus passes for students to be able to go to and from school. Now I'm here to happily report, you don't have to do that anymore. Last year, the state passed Move Ahead Washington Funding, a transportation funding packet. And one key element of that was to provide grant funding to transit agencies that provided a 18 and under for free program. And the funding would cover the costs that we would have gotten if we had charged for it. So that's significant savings for the school district as a result. The ridership for students accounts about 25% for our total ridership. And since this has been implemented since October of last year, we've actually seen our ridership increase. And with ridership increasing, we can actually potentially get additional funding from the state and the federal government as a result. So with the savings for the school district, the possible increase in funding for the city, and the fact that the students can continue to be transferred to and from the school, we think that this is a win-win for everyone involved.
Great.
Questions?
Anyone?
Just curious, what does that annual expense look like in the past?
Well, I know that the amount of monthly passes, I think, is about 200 and some. At $18 a month, over the school year, it's probably 30, 35,000. So good chunk of change.
Any other comments, question? Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you.
Okay, the next three items on the agenda will be presented by the school board. Board President Norm Walker will introduce these items.
Thank you, Mayor DeCio. First up, we have some information on the upcoming levy. Superintendent Green and Mr. Cooper will provide us with that information.
Thank you, President Walker. I'll provide the lead in. RCW 84.52.053 permits the school board to authorize a special election to be placed before voters for taxes to fund educational programs and operations, an EPO levy. The board, the Yakima School Board, did approve Resolution 09.22.23, which gave that authorization, and it will be going to the voters in February of 2024. Jake Cooper, who is here this evening, our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, will share the information about the levy proposal that has been approved by our board. And we are hoping to inform you as city council members of what this looks like. And so we do hope that you ask questions and fully understand what is going before the voters and why we do this as a school district, how we have to operate. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. I'd like to first thank all the elected officials in the room for your service. It's very rare to get all elected officials of a local level together, so thank you. And then secondarily, good to see you again, Mr. Harrison. Bob and I had a fortunate opportunity to work together on the other side of the state, and good to see you as well. So before I begin, that's all I wanted to get out of the way, and we'll dive right into the presentation. So again, I'm Mr. Jacob Cooper, Assistant Superintendent of Finance for Yakima School District. And we're going to go over briefly the pending levy that Dr. Green talked about. First off, before I begin, I would be remiss if I didn't remind all of us, there actually, in this case, we're going to talk about the Education Programs and Operations levies. The school district actually has three different taxing opportunities, a capital projects levy, an EPNO school bond, I take that back, four, and a bus levy, which is not included on this slide. So this evening, we're going to be talking about the EPNO levy. Used to be called the MNO levy, a very common nomenclature around the state. That has changed over the years, and you'll often see school districts, both east and western side of the state, refer to them as the Educational Programs and Operations levy, which is what we'll be seeking for renewal on the February ballot. Not on the ballot in February, but still other taxing measures the school district has at its disposal, a capital projects levy, which can be used to modernize and rehabilitate buildings also for technology. And then school bonds, which require a supermajority and are similar to you as a homeowner taking out a mortgage and repaying back that principal and interest over time to finance a larger project. And so those are our major taxing mechanisms for the school district. Some passage history in Yakima, you'll note. I believe you have this potentially hard copy at your place, if those are difficult to read. As you can see, historically, Yakima passes its taxing measures, particularly levy measures, and has not had a failure since 1998, which is not on this graph. But you can see, last election, the 2020 capital measure didn't pass by about 30 basis points, which is for, which is very close in any time. And then the EPNO levy, which we're seeking renewal of, passed by 51.9%. So just a reminder to the audience that the taxing measures and the EPNO levy is a simple majority, 50% plus one, while a bond is a supermajority, 60% plus one. One major driver for all of our, both taxing revenue and taxing measures as we plan them and bring them forward to the community, of course, is our property values and assessed valuations. So before you, it was a slide that recaps Yakima School District assessed valuation. Remember, we cross, we can cross multiple city boundaries. In this case, we have some, most of all of our properties within the city limits, but certain school districts will have property that spans multiple municipalities. So just to be clear, that is the school district's assessed valuation. That is not the city's assessed valuation or the counties. That is our own, based on our boundaries. So that is what's before you. We have seen rapid assessed valuation growth over the last few cycles. As you noticed, 17% growth in 2023. We are also modeling near double-digit growth, sorry, for '22, and near double-digit growth in the following year. So we have rapid assessed valuation growth in the billions, both in new construction. As you can see, we did an analysis in 2023, nearly 80 million in new construction hitting the rolls. So oftentimes, when we're looking at your tax base, we'll look at the gain in the value itself and the assessment, and then also how much new construction is being added to the rolls. So any redevelopment and new development would be in that new construction bucket. But you can see that added to the total tax base, to the 200, nearly 80 million. Any questions on property values and taxes before I go on to the next slide? It's hard to follow the swimming pool and the wonderful Handle With Care program and give a budget presentation, but I will try. I did joke with my folks earlier that it could be an interpretive dance, but they said no. Next slide. So property values and school taxes. So school districts, our operations levy is capped. So we can, similar to how a city has a levy limit, lid limit, we also have our own levy limit. And ours is in statute in two different ways. It is $2.50 per thousand, or whichever is lesser. Or when you can raise more money than that on a per student, so it's whatever lesser amount. So if you have an assessed valuation that's greater, and you can raise more money on a per student basis, then the state will flip you over to a per student model. But it's still whichever is lesser. So if it was $2 per thousand, but you were able to raise it $3,000 per student, that would be allowed in your statute. But remember, you're still chasing whatever is the lesser of the two. So districts with a high assessed valuation, think East King County in particular, they would be a per student basis, where most of your districts in eastern Washington are capped on that per thousand. So you can see that in 2019 was, that was the McCleary reset year. And then the legislature lowered our local taxes and taxes around the state that the school district was able to collect. You can see that our local levy dropped in 2019. They replaced that in part with a second state's common schools levy, which you would see on your tax bill. You see your original tax bill from the state on the state common schools levy, and then you would see a McCleary portion, and those are divided out in two. And so what the legislature did during the McCleary fix is that they lowered taxing authority, a local school district taxing authority across the state, and they increased state taxing authority. And that is the system we are currently under. We have either $2.50 per thousand cap or a per student cap, whichever generates less money. And then, of course, going forward, we find in ourselves and our system, just to ground you, is that Yakima will be, is a $2.50 per thousand school district, and that will be our local levy cap. With the rapid growth in assessed valuation, what has happened over time is the district was not able to keep up with the assessed valuation growth. And therefore, we are below our statutory levy capacity by, in 2023, we are almost three and a half million short. And if trends continue, we'll be close to $5 million by 2025, when the levy would actually start to take place. Any questions on assessed valuation? Now, most important thing, not most important, but something that we all like to pay attention to, particularly elected officials, and of course, your finance officers, or what the tax rate looks like to your community and what is put forward. Before you, on the slide deck is a breakdown of our both past and currently approved tax rates, and with all of our outstanding measures. The, the tanish or buckskin is our outstanding school bond, or would be a school bond, sorry, an outstanding school bond, that was passed in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, for Davis. What year was that superintendent, sorry, with Davis and Eisenhower funded? Oh nine, sorry, the first round was ninety-eight, so oh nine. That's the, the tan is the outstanding debt service for those bonds that continues. And the green, or the emerald-looking color, of course, is our projected tax rates for the EP and O levy, which is up for renewal in February. So those two major drivers, since the district has no other outstanding levies, those comprise our total tax rate. So we have outstanding bonds and an operating levy. Those are our two taxing measures we have currently authorized, and the community is, is paying locally. As you can see, in two thousand twenty-three, our bond rate in the buckskin drops to a dollar three per thousand. And as I said before, what's different about school districts is we, we tax a flat amount against the tax base. And then we are, we are, we have to statutorily then work with that number throughout the four-year period. So if we, if we project a levy and it's twenty million, twenty-one million, twenty-two, twenty-three, let's say, that is the flat amount. So if assessed valuation grows, we do not collect any more taxes. What happens is the rate changes. So school districts are fairly unique when it comes to municipalities. Some municipalities levy a rate per thousand, school districts levy a flat amount against their tax base, and then the rate is calculated or imputed. So that is one difference. We, we project what we can tax based on our authority, and then, of course, that is imputed once the tax actually spreads across the tax base. So it does, you know, it is, there is modeling, it's not guesswork. It is, it is modeling, statistical modeling, that hopes you get, hopefully, you get there by year four. But as you can see, if you look back forty-eight months from today, a lot of water has gone under that bridge when it comes to evaluations and where we're at. And so we do our best to model appropriately with the right amount of growth, both for inflation and assessed valuation change. But again, we find ourselves below our statutory authority and requesting an additional levy measure. One point before we begin here or continue, this levy expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and after that, the district has to ask the voters, of course, for a new levy, which it will be doing in the February election, which last board meeting, the board of lectures, the board approved, board directors approved for the ballot. As you can see from our proposed tax rating, so the, the, the five columns on the right hand of the hash, where it goes to preliminary, you can see the two thousand twenty-four projected rates. The number, the green number on top is our total tax rate. So when people ask, what is, how much is the school district taxing you in total? Those are our, our per thousand rates at the very top. What you can see is, in two thousand twenty-four, if you're looking for two dollars and fifty cents per thousand, the district is forty-nine cents below its statutory authority, and which puts us significantly below our taxing thresholds. The proposal that was approved by the board of directors and went through a levy advisory committee and the technical team and superintendent review, you can see have a proposal that provides an estimated two dollar and fifty cents per thousand. That's currently estimated, obviously, those rates will not become final until assessed valuation is approved by the assessor that cycle. But the goal, the financial goal, and much needed, as we have declined enrollment, is to keep our levy close to full authority at two dollars and fifty cents per thousand, which it was at the very first year in two thousand twenty of our last measure. You can see from the data that our assessed valuation and economic growth fortunately have lowered our, our taxing authority, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, because there's been economic growth and assessed valuation increases, so. But the district has to rebase that, and that's what it will be doing in February of twenty-four. And then I, I would be remiss if, as a chief financial officer, if I didn't bring something close to an Excel grab in my PowerPoint deck. And I always think this is important to know, now, this is part of a much longer document on the last slide, and you have it before you. But what it does is it shows you our historical tax rates and the amounts. It might, you might be ruler-dependent, I'm of, I'm of that age where I have become ruler-dependent on a sheet like that, I do apologize. But what I like to point out is both, if you look at the assessed valuation, which is interesting, the ten-year average growth for assessed valuation for Yakima School District, which comprises most of the city, is about six point two percent. The five-year average, as you see, is just nine basis points under ten, so almost ten percent growth in the last five years, that's year-over-year average. And then what I like to put out, and just, both for transparency and people have mathematical interest in tax rates and assessed valuation, is both the ten-year average and the five-year average of the district's actual tax rate. So the ten-year average is four oh eight, and our five-year average is three forty-five. The district in, is requesting in February, with the outstanding bonds and a new levy measure, a total combined tax rate of three dollars and forty cents per thousand. So you can see that's below our five-year average and significantly below our ten-year average, which is about four oh eight per thousand. So I know there was a lot of numbers, and you've enjoyed us some time together in presentations, but I would be more than happy to take some financial questions, as I, as I know they can be very fun this time of evening. Any questions on the levy that is coming before the voters in February?
Does this question? Oh.
Just before you pass it over to one of the council members, Mr. Cooper, could you talk about, just briefly, about the three refinanced bonds and the savings to the community? I don't know if you know that number, I think it's around ten million. And could you just kind of give an idea of how that has showed some fiscal prudence and responsibilities going into this levy?
So the district recently refinanced bonds, which is very similar to if you have a home mortgage and you refinance your home mortgage. And so let's say you're paying seven, which is the current rate, seven and a half, and you found a note out there for two and a half, that's basically what happens when the district refinances its debt, is that we are perpetually examining those outstanding coupons, because they are in different years and have different interest rates. And in Washington state law, if you can show a positive net present value savings over each of the years of the debt you have refinanced, you were able to refinance that debt. The district did that prior to my arrival here, and I believed it was ten, I do not want to misquote the number of superintendent, I'm sorry, I do not have it. But it was many millions of dollars, and of course, that lowers the debt service, and then, then lowers that accompanying tax rate you saw on that buckskin part of the graph. So just, you know, because interest is a component, principal interest are both being repaid with the debt service, lower interest costs, you lower cost to taxpayers, and in the end, that keeps more money in people's pockets at home, not servicing debt. So yes, superintendent, apologies for that, I do not have it off the top of my head. But a significant amount of savings. The laws change around refunding and refinancing of bonds, you can no longer do an advanced refunding, you have to wait until the bonds are callable. I know that's technical, but it basically means you can only do it at a point, point in time, as denoted by the bonds themselves, when they were sold, you cannot do it in advance, as you were. That, that federal law changed about thirty-six months ago, I believe.
Thank you.
Any questions from the?
I, I do have one, just wondering if it'd be possible for you to send us your, your slides, so I can look at them.
One hundred and ten percent possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, can you talk a little bit about the committee that was put together and the involvement from the different stakeholders that participated in bringing forward the recommended measure?
Superintendent, do you want to start, or you want me to go? Yes, gracias.
I think I will just pass that directly to you, and I know, Kirsten, were you part of that as well? Okay, so if you want to join, we can.
Hi.
Please introduce yourself, yes.
I'm Kirsten Fitterer, I'm the Executive Director of Communications and Engagement. Thank you for all of you being here tonight. We did have a levy advisory committee that was made up of students, staff, parents, and district staff. And we held a meeting for about two and a half, three hours one night. And Mr. Cooper went over all of this with us and had some really lively and some intense discussion over that, and then making a final proposal to the superintendent that you see before you today.
I have another question.
Okay. Ms. Byers?
Thank you. So you kind of ran across a statement that said, you know, we, we need increased income because enrollment is down. Can you please explain how that works for the public to know?
Yes, ma'am. So Yakima finds itself in a very interesting financial position. The district has seen decline in enrollment since two thousand sixteen, seventeen, I believe, or seventeen, eighteen, one of those two fiscal years. And I'll try to recall this from memory. Currently, the decrease of about a thousand students from that point in time to this fiscal year, currently, with all our funding, the district's funding, both state, local, and federal, it's about seventeen thousand per student. So when you lose a thousand students, rough math, that's about seventeen million dollars in operating revenue annually. So during the same timeframe, when enrollment has declined, we have also seen inflationary pressures, which we are not immune to. So school districts do not do very well with inflation, because we are often funded kind of on a leg basis. So economies happen, happen, then the state budget happens, and it's always kind of in lag. Sorry, I'm moving away from my microphone. What that does to us over time, so we've had inflationary pressures. The district's wisely used its one-time federal funding, for the most part. We still have between eight and ten million to utilize for our, finishing our projects at Discovery Learning and Davis Auditorium. And now that that one-time federal money is gone, it is, it is time to downsize operations based on our current enrollment levels. Now, what I also said is, yes, we are, we are down in enrollment, we also need more revenue, both things are true at the same time. As you saw from my proposal, the district is under its statutory authority for collection. So we also are in a place where, so we have state revenue in decline because we're in decline enrollment, and increased costs, and our local portion is under its authority. So we have to make up for that and continue operations. We are facing a near fifteen million dollar budget deficit next cycle. Obviously, a levy passage is a big portion of that revenue picture going forward. Just like you all, we're not immune to, to budget issues. And so decline enrollment, and then inflationary pressures have, you know, they have taken a toll on a lot of local government, and we are not immune. So this is one, that, this is the, a local taxing measure for the school district, as you see, there's a few flavors to it. But this is one way for sure that our community can raise money that goes back into the classroom or the school system. As you all, we're, we are at the beck and call of the legislature, as the biggest chunk of our revenue comes from them, nearly eighty-plus percent. So that's the wild card as well.
Thank you.
May I add to this? Thank you, and then Jake, you might want to dovetail off what I share. Appreciate the question, and I think Director Rice almost alluded to the legislature and unfunded mandates earlier. She didn't quite say that, but I think she was thinking that. To give you an idea of some of the challenges, even though we see some declining enrollment, and let's take special education, for example. The cost has continued to grow year over year. And currently, right now, we have sixty-five percent is funded by the state and nine percent by the federal government, which leaves twenty-six percent to be funded locally. Currently, that has increased well beyond what it was a couple of years ago to almost ten million dollars of funds that we, we don't have. So when you're talking about the needs of, now, while the levy, you know, if, if we have the levy, it pays for certain things, it frees up money for other opportunities. So there, you have to imagine this as multiple buckets and how this works collectively to then support our district. So that's just one example of how unfunded mandates impact districts. And then, of course, the soaring cost of serving students with special needs. In fact, I think Director Beckett and I were in a classroom here, I guess it was last week, it was Monday or Tuesday. I, it had to be Tuesday, I guess it was Tuesday or Wednesday. And, you know, we were in a, in a classroom with students that had severe and profound needs. And part of our obligation, and rightfully so, is that we serve those that are at least capable of our society. And in that room, we had three, three students in the room, and I think we had six to seven adults in that room. So if you're looking at the generated cost per pupil, and then you're looking at the expenditures, the outgoing, it doesn't match up. And so when we take all of these different buckets into account from federal, state, and then the local, and how those work together, that's why we really do need to ask for the full authority of that two dollars and fifty cents. Anything you would like to add to that, Jake?
I think, you know, like every local government, we've had headwinds. We had recently, last, what, three years ago, the state implemented the School Employee Benefit Board, which was a large expansion of health benefits for employees. A large portion of that was unfunded, so any, any employee that wasn't funded by the state, the district had to pick up a thousand dollars a month for, to remit back to the healthcare authority for insurance. And so that, that is ongoing. And then, of course, inflation has, has been, has been rough on all, all the supply chains and, and things like that. They just are not, our funding models are not nimble enough to respond to inflation in a manner that, that helps us out. And so that's where we find ourselves. Declining and declining enrollment, which should mean less revenue and increased expenditures at the same time. And so one way to do that is manage downward smartly, and then also seek out stable and proven revenue streams, such as the local levy, which we're, we're doing in February, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Cooper or the superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you again for all your service.
Just a couple other items that are on the district's agenda for today. One was, we wanted to just thank the city for the work that you've done at Robertson Elementary. I drove by there today, and it's, it's, I live in that neighborhood, and so it's fun to see that kind of progress. I've been aware of that issue for a long time. And, and I'm also hopeful that, I know the city is strapped for money, but, but that we can continue to look at some of our schools and some of the approaches, especially the elementary schools. I think there are other schools that are, have similar needs that we can continue to collaborate on and, and help that happen. We also, Superintendent Green already mentioned the one-way streets and so on, and some of the changes around Adams, Hoover, and Garfield. And so we've dispensed with that part of the agenda, unless you want to add anything on that.
No, it was an opportunity to share earlier, just like you said, thank you so much.
So that's our, that's our agenda for today, unless you have anything else you'd like to?
I just have one small addition, and since we jumped through those very quickly, just like to acknowledge that we have a calendar, a school district calendar. We hope that you take a look at this, it certainly has lots of, a significant amount of valuable information of what's happening around the district and events. So I, I would certainly wanted to call that to your attention. Thank you, President Walker, for allowing me that opportunity.
Any other questions or comments for the good of the order? I'll turn it back to you, as you are our official host for today.
Okay. Well, with all the business of this special meeting of the Yakima City Council having been concluded, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn to our next regularly scheduled city council meeting, which is September fifth at five-thirty in council chambers.
Second.
Second, okay. So a motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously, and we are adjourned.